Welcome, everyone, to the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Any calls to the public? Any cards?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You may recall at the last meeting, we indicated that there were some people departing the Police Department.
Correct.
And we're pleased to introduce a newly-named Assistant Chief Louis Tovar, who was in the audience. He will be responsible for Community and Strategic Services Division.
Congratulations, Chief, huh? And go Knights!
Yeah, exactly. And go Knights, exactly.
We all went to St. Mary's, if you can tell.
Did you see that curtain box?
All righty. So with that, I'd like to see if anyone would like to improve the minutes of last month.
I would make the motion to approve the minutes of November 8th, 2017, and December 13th, 2017.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. We have, item number two is a consent item. Is there a motion to approve that consent item?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carried. We're on an update of Nextdoor with our new chief. All right. They're putting you in the hot seat already, huh?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of Subcommittee. I'm new, sorry. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of Subcommittee, and thank you. It's a pleasure to be here as the newest member of the executive team. Here, in response to requests for information on our organization's involvement in nextdoor.com, I'm sure you'll find one presents some information here. We have found over the past few years now, it's been quite the medium for us to communicate from all levels of our organization, actually, on a much more personal level to members of our community. So, here to present some information and absolutely answer all of your questions. It's probably one of the more recognizable faces out of our organization, one of our public information officers, Sergeant Vince Lewis, who works in our Public Affairs Bureau, where he actually coordinates our department's involvement.
Sergeant Lewis?
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Mayor, members of Subcommittee. I'm here to talk a little bit about nextdoor.com and where we've come. And 2014 is when Phoenix Police Department began their involvement in the private social network designed for neighborhoods, designed for people within geographic areas to speak to each other in private conversations and share information. They can speak on topics about anything that affects them or their community: items for sale, yard sales, community events. Public safety is one of those topics as well. Phoenix Police Department does have a business account of sorts, it has a public safety account. We have one-way messaging where we can address those within the city of Phoenix. We can target specific neighborhoods designed around addressing specific precincts as well. That is a one-way messaging tool for us to spread information about events. We'll use it to communicate on a personal level some of the successes that we've had recently. We've, Chief Williams has been able to use that in such a way to dispel misinformation surrounding the serial street shooter investigation recently. That was a way of targeting the community first and giving them an unfiltered message first, knowing that media does have access to that. That information is shared with media and could be used as a way to disseminate information, but we wanted it to be heard by our community first in a way of strengthening those partnerships. Other means of communication is we put out information on crime suppression efforts. Our Take It, Lock It, Conceal It, the TLC campaign, we used it to communicate with that. We put out information recently on the opioid epidemic and the Angel Initiative. So there are plenty of opportunities for us to continue that one-way communication with them. There are private conversations, like I said, going on between neighbors that we are not privy to. We cannot see that. Conversations could be started, and we could be tagged or invited into those conversations, but we do not have an overarching view of all conversations that are going on. So our reach is widespread, but our capabilities are limited.
I think one of the questions that came up was how can the council members actually have maybe some access or pass out information through Nextdoor? Sometimes we get calls regarding a tree falling down in the middle of the road, and you want to make sure that the neighbors aren't going down that street, so just to pass out that type of information. Is there a certain individual that we can contact? Or if there is other, if somebody's breaking into garages or so, and we get that information, it's not on Nextdoor yet, how do we get that information out there?
Mr. Chair, members of Subcommittee, that information can most definitely be passed to our office, the Public Affairs Bureau at the Phoenix Police Department, because it has to do with public safety. That is definitely a message that we would be more than happy to echo on your behalf. That can be shared with us, but again, we would use our one-way messaging to just essentially blast that information out to whomever is listening. We have seen a sharp increase in the last 30 days, about 4,300, so 4,339 households have joined nextdoor.com, listening specifically to the Phoenix Police Department. Our membership of the households that are listening to the Phoenix Police Department were up to about 166,758 households as of this morning. So we do, that is our reach. Those are the people who would receive the message that we would put out.
Vice Mayor?
So when you say they have joined, they have joined Nextdoor, or they have specifically joined a Phoenix Police, I guess, email or communication? Because when I join Nextdoor, I'm joining Nextdoor within the neighborhood. There is items that come through, that's come out of the City of Phoenix Police Department, but other items also come out of the Neighborhood Services or different departments. So I just need clarity on that one.
Yes, Vice Mayor, members of Subcommittee, when you join Nextdoor, you're, the first thing you do is verify that your address, that you live at that address, and they do that through the mail using a card. That allows you access to a specific geographical location within your neighborhood. You can listen to the conversations that are going on within your neighborhood and start private conversations as well. So when you join that neighborhood, you can hear what the Phoenix Police is saying, but you have to engage us in a conversation on the side.
Chair, one of the dynamics that I experienced with Nextdoor, and I think as council people, we should be able not only to have the demographic or the geographic area that we live in, I would like to also know what's happening within my other neighborhoods of this city or District 4, really, to understand what is going on in those neighborhoods. So I could view and say, okay, hey, this is where some information, or this is what you can do, here, go to this website, boom, 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 or go to this page, because that's what I do within the Nextdoor area that I have. For example, there were several conversations regarding Encantle Park and some of the activities happening in Encantle Park. Then I saw conversations within the same day of transient population, homeless population, what is happening in the alleys, dynamics that are happening in the alleys. And then, third time around, this is where I got like, okay, who monitors this and who then reaches out to these constituents? Because they're all going back and forth, not really knowing what to do or where to go. And I'm assuming that this is happening, and I know it's happening within my area, where I am privileged to see, but I know it's also happening in other Districts 4 area. And if I can get information to them, like I did, then it's easier to say, hey, we hear you, I'm reading this, boom, boom, boom. I called up Phoenix Cares because of some of the things that were happening on here. I called up Phoenix Cares and said, reported what was with the area and everything else. Then I start to question and ask, okay, who from NSD monitors and says, we are having an issue over here, or there's something moving? To be able then to talk to the collective or the bigger group to say, yeah, we've been seeing a pattern, or there has been, we're watching that, there's other activity going on that we're aware of. And I was told we don't have the privilege to monitor that. So my question back is, who is now responsible then for all this information on the city side, knowing that conversations are happening and misinformation is really happening?
Correct. Vice Mayor, we are experiencing a similar situation where we, because we are not part of those private conversations that are happening between neighbors amongst themselves about issues that directly affect them and do have a lasting broader-range effect on the city, we don't have access to those communications unless those issues are brought to us, in the classic sense of, we don't know about it unless you tell us. So we, those issues do have to be brought to us. We are in the same position where we cannot monitor Nextdoor. Our understanding is that Nextdoor was not designed to be a repository for us to monitor conversations and listening in, as would be the fear for any private citizen to know who's listening to their conversations that they assume are restricted to a geographical area. We are in the same position, essentially. So what we have done is we've given our CAOs the capability, the permissions, to continue conversations with those targeted neighborhoods. They start conversations. If they were to post a topic, someone could respond to them on that topic and begin a new conversation. Those conversations, because we've been, that we're a part of, we can listen to and interact with. So it comes out to...
So are the community action officers of their geographic area then have the access?
To speak and begin conversations, not to monitor.
Right. But what I mean by monitor is, and that's probably the wrong term that I'm using, what I mean is then to give information to the neighborhood or to that conversation to say, hey, this is the process that you need to take, say, to close the alley. There's a pilot program going on, here's where you go to the website to look for that information, boom, boom, boom. That is happening?
Yes, we're relying on our community action officers to engage those people specific with those problems in that geographical neighborhood. On a broader range, with the other social media accounts, we do have a web detail. We have the Public Affairs Bureau with permissions, so we will be doing our best to monitor Facebook, Twitter, any of the other social media accounts that we have to do just such a thing, dispel misinformation and give community education.
And Vice Mayor, I think what's happening too is that people are confused, and we need to educate individuals. People think if they go on Nextdoor that we're actually monitoring and maintaining that website. It's not that, it's really a grassroots approach to policing your own neighborhoods, and sort of like community policing. So I think we need to educate people if they want the police to be involved or public other services of the city, that they need to tag that department somehow, some way. And I think that that's where we get those calls saying, well, we were on Next, we were on Nextdoor, we posted it there, didn't you guys see it? No, it's just that area, that zip code area that, a part of that conversation. So I think we need to educate some of these community organizations that are out there, homeowners' associations, and just have a campaign on how to use Nextdoor. It's a tool out there that individuals should know about, and we should have at least 20,000-plus individuals using that on a daily basis.
Yeah, I mean, we should, I mean, the purpose of Nextdoor, I guess, what is the purpose of Nextdoor? Because we brought it to our neighborhoods and police, it's in the lands in the public safety area, so what was the intent of Nextdoor on the police side?
So the intent of Nextdoor on our side was to reach another demographic of individuals who have found a social media favorite. Users tend to gravitate towards the most social media platform that they prefer. This is another way of echoing messages, public safety messages, public education, community awareness, marketing our department, the city. It's just another way for us to reach the people who are online in our community.
It's kind of like Block Watch on cyberspace, right? Where neighbors can communicate with each other, saying, hey, we just got a bike stolen, you know, I got a bike stolen too, it was two individuals, blah, blah, blah. And then they find those individuals, they call the police, and they come and arrest them, or they go after those bad individuals. So I think that we're at a whole different level where people are believing that we as a city are maintaining and controlling Nextdoor, and I think we need to actually educate people that it is sort of a grassroots, community-based website, and if we want to go to a different level, we need to start designing something like that.
We're being very creative in the manner in which the Police Department is using. If you remember, Nextdoor was created several years, I believe that year was 2011, and it's used nationally as a way of communicating between neighborhoods. Public safety has just found an opportunistic way to use it as another medium to communicate with communities themselves. And that's what we've done by establishing a public safety account. We are able now to, again, communicate in one-way conversations from all levels of our organization, quite frankly, directly to those who are only enrolled in nextdoor.com themselves. Beyond that, we're still learning how to use it and be more creative and to use it to our advantage to communicate more effectively. There are two-way communications that can occur only when we are invited, and that's what we're using it for now, so. But you're right, I do see the opportunity for us to probably raise everyone else's awareness of exactly how to use that effectively between us, and we can do that probably most effectively through our community action officers in each precinct as well.
Yeah, because I would say that what I am hearing is that we got this tool, or we purchased this tool for marketing. I'm hearing, we purchased this tool for marketing, we purchased it in order to get information out to our communities. That's what I'm hearing from you guys.
So we did not pay any money to use this? We are not charged for this?
No, no, I said, however...
I understand, Vice Mayor, yes.
However, we were introduced to Nextdoor. We use it as a tool.
Vice Mayor, members of Subcommittee, we established a public safety account...
Okay.
...in order to use nextdoor.com as a matter to communicate.
You know, a suggestion would be is maybe we should have someone from Nextdoor come in and kind of explain to us once again what Nextdoor is and how we can use it effectively. As a city of Phoenix, it's not just public safety, but individuals are saying, hey, I need a, my garbage can was stolen, how can I get a new garbage can, and stuff like that. So how can we, as a city, utilize technology to its fullest? And I think that the conversations really with individuals from Nextdoor, letting us know what's going on throughout the country and how we can best use that technology as a city also. So I would suggest maybe in the near future, putting that as a future agenda item, to come in and explain to us what Nextdoor is once again, and how can we educate those community organizations that are using it.
My question is, on Nextdoor, when the city starts a new program, Phoenix Cares, for example, do you blast that out to all the neighbors so that they know that that program has started, how to contact them, either through, you know, phone calls, emails, et cetera? Do you put that out?
Councilwoman Williams, members of Subcommittee, that is correct. Typically, what we'll do with messaging from the Public Affairs Bureau is we'll craft, if necessary, a media release with, using certain language that they are familiar with. We will turn to Facebook with a longer message, we will use Twitter with a shorter message and a link to that longer message, and the Facebook, with the Nextdoor, the messaging will be very similar. It's full of detail with contact information. To answer your question, yes, we will use Nextdoor as another means to disseminate that same information, just so that we're hitting everybody that's online.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I was the one who brought up this asked word on the agenda, because I'm dealing with, you know, I monitor, not monitor, but chat back and forth, I guess. It's kind of like a chat. 19th Avenue and Osborne. What's on Nextdoor, I woke up to it this morning, 19th Avenue and Osborne, over 20 men on 19th Avenue and Osborne, brawls happening in the middle of the street. Now what's going on, on the back and forth? Is this gang-related? What is this? What do we do? We got caught, we were innocent, my daughter was with me, I got caught innocently there. Now the whole neighborhood within that area is now saying, what is this? Who caused it? Are they high school kids? Are they transients, homeless? Is it a gang? And now that's the feed that's going on. So what happens in that? And I guess, I kind of feel responsible because, you know, I'm part of the city, and I feel like, okay, how do I respond in these situations? And I'm not sure after, you know, whatever happened, if anybody then follows up with the neighborhood to say, okay, this is what transpired. Be out on the lookout, or I don't know what, so.
Right. Vice Mayor, members of Subcommittee, a conversation like that, organic, grassroots conversation is designed to be person-to-person and what they would consider private or at least restricted to that geographical neighborhood. If an officer or an elected official or somebody from the city lives in that neighborhood and has submitted their address and verified, they can hear that conversation. That information is definitely useful for public safety and could or should be brought to the Phoenix Police Department's attentions, or at least the community action officers' attentions, so that it could be addressed. However, we are not listening to those conversations. Again, there's conversations happening across mediums that we are not aware of. There's private conversations at homes that we are not privy to. Again, that information has to be brought to our attention.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Welcome, Chief, and hope to see you more often.
Thank you, very much.
All right, our next item is the Light Rail Safety and Security Update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Subcommittee. I'm Mario Panagoua, Deputy City Manager, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide an overview of the initiatives that are underway to improve safety and security of the light rail system. Here with me is Albert Santana and Chief Sandra Renteria and Commander Brad Burt to help deliver this information. Before I turn it over to Albert to cover these slides, I do want to recognize the work of this Subcommittee, as well as the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee chaired by Councilwoman Williams. There's also been quite a bit of work on this subject by our Citizens Transportation Commission, which is chaired by Ed Pastor. I also want to recognize Vice Mayor Laura Pastor for all her work on this matter, working with our community and just really digging into this issue and offering ideas for new ways to address this work. Obviously, this work requires really strong partnerships between the police and public transit departments, working with Valley Metro, as well as social service agencies through our Human Services Department and Community Bridges. Security needs are always fluid, and under the leadership of this City Council, working hard and devoting new resources to this effort. So I'll turn it over to Albert to provide an overview of the partnership efforts now underway.
Thank you, Mario, and Chair Nowakowski, members of the Subcommittee. Thank you for allowing us to be here and provide you with this update, and then really being able to provide you with information about the partnerships and the importance of those partnerships. And so what I'd like to do is really start out from the beginning, when the City of Phoenix truly began their expansion and their investment in public transit, going back to the initial program, which was Transit 2000. At that time, it was recognized, just like today, is that as we expand our services, specifically in public transit, that safety and security and making sure that we utilize the expertise and the resource of our Phoenix Police Department is absolutely critical for the success of our system, specifically for the environment, for our passengers, as well as the surrounding areas where these investments are at. At that time, when we initiated the Transit Enforcement Unit, it began with one commander, and obviously, as the investments has grown, as the city has grown, as the system has expanded, rightfully so, so has this unit to be able to keep providing those resources. So as we advance to today in 2018, the unit, rightfully so, has many more resources and many more officers and different specialized resources, as well as private security contracts, municipal security guards, and really with the mission about ensuring the safety and security of the trans employees and especially the passengers within the city of Phoenix. And that's a large order when you're talking about over 500 square miles, as well as, you know, almost 250,000 boardings a day between bus and light rail. So having the ability to have the expertise of the Phoenix Police Department, working with the Public Transit Department, is absolutely critical for one of the most important things for the success of our system. When you look at the funding that we have, and this is the most recent funding in fiscal year 1718, specifically for the Transit Enforcement Unit, we're at about $9.5 million that is dedicated to that unit to be able to provide those resources. Also, the Public Transit Department has a contract with the, with private security contract, that's $2 million. And then, as Mario alluded to, the relationship and the partnership and resources with Valley Metro, that's $3.5 million, which is the City of Phoenix's share to provide to Valley Metro Rail for them to be able to operate their programs that they have and allow for that resources and communication with Valley Metro's Director of Safety and Security, as well as with our Phoenix Police Department. This here is just a couple of examples of not just the day-to-day operations that the Transit Enforcement Unit has, but also the ability and resources to do specialized programs, whether it's crime suppression programs, as well as being able, when hearing things from either Mayor, City Council, as well as from the residents, to be able to target some of these efforts, as well as like along 19th Avenue, where we had to enhance some of our resources and interactions. So by having this funding identified, we are able to be nimble and fluid, as was mentioned before, because this is a daily process that we work on. Kind of transitioning in, because it is very important to talk about Valley Metro Rail, specifically when we're talking about light rail safety and security, and before I proceed to the next few slides, I would like to introduce Adrian Ruiz, who is here today, if you can raise your hand. Adrian is Valley Metro's Director of Safety and Security, and she was also, spent many years with the Phoenix Police Department as the Lieutenant over the Transit Enforcement Unit, so obviously has lots of background and has done some amazing modifications in her time with Valley Metro to really help enhance the communication and the efficiencies of the operation. So I want to make sure that I recognize Adrian and her team's effort. And just kind of highlighting the division that Adrian oversees on behalf of Valley Metro. Many positions, I won't go through them all, but I just wanted to at least provide you with an overview of the different disciplines that are a part of the efforts that Valley Metro brings in addition to and help to complement the efforts of our Phoenix Police Department. Everything from fair inspection, safety, security, making sure we have field supervisors, and this is really a 24/7 operation. This is a highlight of some of the background that Adrian and her team, working with their private security, which is Allied Universal, making sure that Valley Metro has the internal staff to be able to efficiently monitor and work with their contractors, making sure that the individual companies and their employees of those companies have the proper training and videos and the ability to have that skill set for the job that they're being asked to do. And recently, just having lots of meetings with all levels of Allied Universal, including vice presidents, et cetera, this is a major contract for them, and it's a very important service for passengers. So I know Adrian and her staff have done an outstanding job in making sure that they were getting the high level of service from Allied Universal at all levels, everything from field employees to executives. And kind of transitioning to some of the comments that Mario mentioned as well, that was mentioned in the previous presentation on Nextdoor, is about that this is a fluid process, and recently, with some of the feedback that we got from the Mayor, City Council, and specifically areas around 19th Avenue, and again, thank you to the Vice Mayor for her leadership on that particular issue regarding homelessness, that as a part of this program and our ability to be flexible, we were asked to look at the possibility of having resources for a targeted outreach team, homeless outreach team around light rail, and we were able to do that as a part of the Human Services Contract, specifically with Community Bridges. And what they are doing is providing, it's a staff of two from Community Bridges that would work 40 hours a week, and they're flexible hours, so that way they can be deployed as needed depending on the situation. can be deployed as needed, depending on if, if a situation were to arise. And, and the important thing is, is, uh, is, is really trying to understand that in this particular issue, which is a very sensitive issue that deals with individuals, that we brought to the table, an organization that has certified, trained professionals that can do that engagement with individuals that want to be connected with services, et cetera. And so, this was something a little unique from a, from a transit perspective, but, but again, through relationships and partnerships, we were able to, to bring on those resources under the leadership of Mayor, Council, and, and, and really working with the, the community. So, that, um, and this is just some information about the actual cost of that particular program, and, and how we were able to, to fund that by making some modifications with our private security guard checks. So, for, for me, this was kind of our, uh, introduction about some of the high-level services and the coordination that we have between the City of Phoenix, Public Transit Department, the Police Department, as well as partners at Valley Metro, as well as, uh, most recently with the, uh, homeless outreach, uh, program that we've also added as a part of, uh, targeting around the light rail. So, with that, uh, that's, kind of brings us to the end of the slides, and I think between the team here, we'll be happy and willing to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor.
I have questions regarding the budget. 9.5 is dedicated to Transit, Transit Enforcement Unit. Is that coming out of the Transit 2000? And in addition, and what is the addition coming out of Transit 2050?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Vice Mayor, so, all of this money is now actually Transportation 2050, and what used to be T, Transit, uh, Transit 2000 is now, falls under the Transportation 2050. It was a, the TEU, the Transit Enforcement Unit, was established under T2000 and carried over, and is now funded overall by T2050. Uh, one of the things that, uh, was added with T2050 to what was already in place was an extra $2 million per year. Um, that would be, uh, ongoing and devoted to addressing security needs that were going to come with the expanded efforts of, of T2050. Uh, and so, at this point, the $2 million is allocated specifically toward, uh, the expanded security at Park and Rides, um, and Transit Centers. So, that accounts for about $1 million of the $2 million, that is, is the additional security needs at, at those places, and that's private security. The other million dollars is allocated toward, um, police, extra police hours that have been, um, devoted, uh, actually within, within the past year, uh, for extra police hours along light rail. So, um, initially, it was about 260,000 in additional police overtime, and then later, another $600,000 was added, um, to that. And then, the final piece, uh, of that is the homeless outreach teams that were recently added. Um, and so, that takes, that accounts for the, the additional $2 million.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and if you could just provide me a breakdown, uh, because I want to look at some items regarding, uh, transit enforcement and the transit enforcement units. I don't, I feel like, uh, we added a team, uh, but, on the Phoenix Cares, but I think we have a larger, uh, line that we need to cover, and the teams that we have added aren't, aren't enough. And so, I want to look for that for the future.
We will provide the detailed breakdown of those costs.
Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I think there's some confusion that Phoenix Police Department provides the security. And actually, up until recently, you've just kind of been a supplemental unit. I serve on the RPTA and the Metro Board, and I always thought that the security that was on the train, uh, was actually providing security services. And then, I found out they were ticket checkers. And we have recently changed that, and I know Adrian was charged to go, uh, meet with them, provide training, uh, because we had passed, uh, an ordinance or got it on the ballot or something, that they could actually, uh, issue tickets, uh, as laypersons. And it, that all has switched within, what, the last 60 days? Adrian?
Yes, ma'am. With respect to that.
Want to come up? Because it, it's changing the dynamics of the security on the train. And then, also, in addition, there weren't real rules for ridership. And those have now been incorporated into, uh, the operation, that, you know, there are regulations now, and the security that's on the train, the hired security, not the Phoenix Police necessarily, can enforce those rules. They, if I understand it, they could kick people off?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, members of the Subcommittee and Chairman, um, yes, ma'am, the Respect the Ride Campaign, which, which the Board did adopt and did approve, uh, just recently, was part of that overall code of conduct that we took, that existed back when the service started, but it was very lax, it was very minimal, very minimal. So, we took that with the Respect the Ride Campaign, initiated a very thorough code of conduct. Um, the fare inspectors or the contract security have had permissions through legislative change, uh, in Phoenix to write the citations, which are civil. Um, that was about 2013. However, as we presented in the Board meeting, Valley Metro wasn't that strong, active voice in giving them that ammunition to go forward and spread that message.
But that's changed.
That's changed with that, with the Board approval. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, I, I also want to make it clear that for Phoenix officers, they are the, the backup, they take care of the platforms for the City of Phoenix. When you go into Tempe, it then becomes Tempe's responsibility, and then into Mesa. So, it's a coordination amongst all of them, uh, on a constant basis. I think it's very important that we continue to work together, uh, to beef this up. I think having, uh, the ability to have that team in there, because I know a lot of complaints for the homeless that were riding it day in and day out, and, and some of the things. But I, I guess I have the advantage of being on that Board, so I get the reports on the good things that you've done, and the results on, on people being ejected, and things are changing. I also learned that because if something's happening at the back of the train, don't assume that the engineer or the driver knows it. They don't. And so, we've also started, if you see it, say it. Yell it out and tell people what's going on, because they have the ability to also radio somebody if they need backup help or to, to change the situation. So, I think this has been a learning process that we have expanded. I compliment all of you, uh, for the changes you've made, the improvements you've made, and identifying the problems as we go along, and, and working collaboratively to make things, good things happen. So, I just want to thank you. I know that, uh, it's an expensive proposition, and as we continue to grow, it will continue to happen. Uh, but I don't blame the entire, almost the transit population on this, when we have the same problems everywhere in the city. It's, it's not confined to just along the, on the rail line. So, um, but, thank you.
My personal opinion, I think we have a problem with the honor system. I mean, we have a system where anybody can just jump onto the light rail and not be asked if you have a ticket or not. So, if you happen to be an individual that doesn't have a place to go or transportation, you jump on the light rail, and it ends up being transports for individuals that happen to be homeless, they get kicked off, they're in a neighborhood, then they call our offices saying, "We have all these individuals living in our alleys, living in the back of our yards, can you do something about it?" Areas that never had that type of problem in the past. So, my thing is, if we're spending $15 million on an annual basis, why do we continue to operate with a system that doesn't work? This honor, this honorary, um, honor system, it's not working. I mean, it's nice, uh, but big cities, when you go to Washington DC, New York, I mean, there's, you have to go through some type of, um, system that checks if you're paid or not. I know that, um, we want it, we don't want it to look ugly and, and, and fenced in and all that, but I believe with the artists that we have, I believe with flower beds and all that, you can create an area that's beautifying, that can make it, that can match the landscaping of the areas. And it's a great concept, but right now, our neighborhoods are suffering, our police officers, even though we're spending all this money with the extra police officers, that, we're not even putting in the hours of the neighborhoods that are calling in in the surrounding areas. I'm getting calls of, right off of, um, Camelback, and, you know, it's in, in Laura's district, but, you know, they're pushing people off the light rail and going into the, the apartments and neighborhoods in that area that never had problems in the past. So, I think we should really look at this whole, um, system, and how do we secure those individuals that actually pay for tickets? Um, fighting is up, big time, trespassing violations are up, and what's happening is that people aren't sitting at the light rail stations, because they're standing to a side waiting till the light rail gets there, then they, they walk up and then they get on there, because they're saying that there's, the benches are being used as, um, as beds and other things, and that they're not cleaned. So, um, I think we need to really figure out if this honor system's working. I know some people are very pro honor system, others aren't. I think we need to figure out the safety of our neighborhoods, and that might be something in the future. The other thing, too, is this whole, um, campaign of respect. Um, I think that we've been getting some concerns of individuals that happen to be minorities and from poorer areas of town, and because of the way that they're dressed and they look, that individuals are, are being targeted. So, we've just got to make sure that we bring in people from all different walks of life, have that conversation with the community, so in the, in the future, we don't have those types of concerns, and that we start to educate people that, if you're going to ride the light rail, if you're going to ride the buses, that you have to respect one another, and that there is going to be some kind of codes, and that you could be kicked off, and it's not because of the way, the part of town that you live in, the way you're dressed, it's the way that you're behaving, it's, and that's what we're going on. So, I think we need to do some type of campaign out there, especially to the poorer areas of town, and also, um, if we use our schools to educate the, the students that are riding, um, the light rail and our buses, that there is a code, that, that we're going to start enforcing that code, and also somehow, some way to the parents. I'm not sure if it's a media campaign, if it's a press conference, I'm not sure if we go out to our block watch groups, our community, neighborhood associations, but we need to be very aggressive, so it doesn't look like we're targeting the homeless individuals, minorities, or our poorer sections of our town. So, those are just some concerns that were, were brought to my attention that I just wanted to, to voice. Um, Councilmember Williams?
I, I think you make some very good points, and part of our discussion that we have going, I have with Albert and with RPTA and Valley Metro, is we have, uh, a ticket system that's very old. It's the original, and we need, we are in the process of going forward and updating. And as part of that, I think there needs to be, as you get on, there's a reader that knows you have a ticket, because I think that's going to eliminate a lot of the freebies that you hear about all the time. Uh, but our compliance rate, truthfully, is very good. Uh, they have become very watchful on verifying people have tickets when they get on, that they've paid, and, and it's actually one of the highest in the country. So, I understand what you're saying, and I think it's absolutely important that, uh, we continue. Transit, light rail is new in this valley, and people don't, uh, always understand the rules and the respect that's, should be given. So, I think you're right on with having a public campaign, uh, to emphasize that, uh, but also know that a lot of this, people are aware of, and we're, we're addressing, um, in different ways. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I don't even know how to approach this. I think one of the responsibilities, um, as a city, is to understand the dynamics and the diversity of neighborhoods. And I totally understand, um, the code of conduct and the respect the ride. And, um, but in this process, I guess my question, and it, we, we've kind, kind of gone to light race, safety, but I think it, it's relevant. In the process of creating, uh, the code of conduct and respect the ride, was there any consciousness on, uh, cultural competencies? And was there any consciousness in when creating, uh, the code of conduct regarding, uh, socioeconomic impact as what the respect the ride would do, um, on also the transient and the homeless, and what, what that dynamic would happen as if I was not following the code of conduct? I'm removed off the platform. I am now on, I'm just going to say, 7th Avenue and Camelback. I'm standing on a corner of 7th Avenue and Camelback. Transient homeless, have no resources at that moment. I'm going to go find safety, and wherever safety is for me, could be, uh, sitting at the Park and Ride, it could be, uh, in an alley, uh, where I've put, uh, several dumpsters together, or they're together, uh, hiding behind there, I don't know. But in the code of conduct in this process, was that ever thought about?
Mr. Chair, Vice Mayor, uh, yes, absolutely. Um, in fact, Valley Metro, prior to the code of conduct, we started the ISAP, so Incident-Centered Care and Enforcement Program. Yeah, if I can.
From a distance.
From a distance, okay. Um, my apologies. The, the Incident-Centered Care and Enforcement Program, uh, that was started prior with, uh, with information from 2014 and on. Might be my voice, I don't know. Okay. And for the idea with, with code of conduct and going to your, pointing to your question, absolutely, there is, this is about behaviors. This is not about demographic, socioeconomic, it's about behaviors, pure and simple. Um, however, Valley Metro cannot be the solver and be a shelter, cannot be, is not the homeless provider. Uh, we do work very closely with City of Phoenix, as we do with Mason, Tempe, and, and Community Bridges, to make sure that we are providing a safe trip for people, and in the event they do have a violation of the code of conduct or a citable offense, the majority of the code of conduct are established on ordinances that were adopted in 2007. So, the majority of that body of work are actually ordinances that are citable. The rest are behavioral and, but not pointed towards cultural sensitivity, or demographic, or socioeconomic. It's all behavior. In fact, we had all of our security personnel also, uh, carry a 211 card. So, if anybody is in the need of any kind of services and wants to make a call, if they have the ability to do that, if they don't immediately need either Public Safety Assistance or CBI, who we do call also, we can give them information on how to contact, for example, a CAS or a shelter, and, but we do provide them with that information. The idea, and when we did the training for the code of conduct, is to not leave people stranded who are in need, either medically or in emergency. If they, but we cannot be that solver of, of homelessness or other needs. But we definitely want to, uh, not abandon people who are possibly in danger, absolutely not. So, that is not the point of the code of conduct. It is to basically be a destination-based service, which it is. It is barrier-free, and it is a proof-of-payment system. Um, so, it does come with its challenges and how best to secure it. Uh, but our, majority of our complaints prior to code of conduct were from our passengers on behaviors that were disorderly. I'm sure you hear them as well, I do get the emails myself, and we needed to address that, to provide a safe trip for everyone. But our, majority of our complaints prior to code of conduct were from our passengers on behaviors that were disorderly, I'm sure you hear them as well, I do get the emails myself, and we needed to address that, to provide a safe trip for everyone.
Well, you're probably the first person that has been able to explain that. Community-wise, I'm just letting you know that, community-wise, that's not how it's perceived. So, my suggestion would be, or may I suggest, would be to start doing a neighborhood campaign or community campaign or light rail campaign, because it is perceived very differently in specifically the minority communities. And that's why I'm bringing it up, because I was questioned. I was questioned, I wasn't aware of the code of conduct until it dropped. And I wasn't even sure what they were talking about. I said, "I have never seen the code of conduct." So, until, and I just said, "I'm not unsure what you're speaking of." I know it dropped because the median, my phone's blowing up, but I personally have not read what the code of conduct is. And so, I could not answer community inquiries. Then I was asked who created it? I was asked who sits on that board? Who comes from these neighborhoods that we're speaking of? I got questioned left and right and didn't have any answers. So, when I finally asked somebody that I would know that knew it, they explained it to me and I was like, "Well, did you do..." And, "Well, no, this is what happened." So, I'm just bringing it up to the forefront of those that are responsible in designing and creating this, to have a consciousness. And I understand behavior, as a teacher, there is a code of conduct of behavior, but when you're dealing with somebody that is mentally ill or having a behavioral health issue, they're not in the right space. And so, that's kind of, kind of the questions, because usually those that are, at least what I've seen, those on the light rail or on the platform are not for safety, you know, just not completely there. And so, this is a big, I guess, first step that we can take and then just to be conscientious as we move towards a future of, I would say, including some citizens on when this is created, because you need citizens to buy in on this and understand it. I think we've learned that from the city, in order to remove some of our initiatives, they have to be part of it, of crafting and understanding it. And so, that would be my recommendation. I'm not saying I think there should be a code of conduct, but it's a matter of what does that look like? So, thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Well, Vice Mayor, I was on the board that helped develop and approve these rules. And it was a pretty good process. It's different than how the City of Phoenix does, because it is 16-member or 18-member cities that come up with this, that have the ability. And then there's the smaller group just for the rail, which is the major contributors or have rail lines. And we hear this, they're all elected representatives that serve on this board. And we all hear the same thing every community meeting we go to. And we hear it from staff, what the problems were, what their limitations were and what they needed to be successful. And that's what was incorporated in, because you're right, it's mostly behaviors. They're limited, they operate a train. Once people are off the train, their authority is gone. It may be turned over to the police department, depending on what the behavior was or not. But unfortunately, transit, homeless, and mentally ill people and just some general nasty people have every right to go on those platforms, they have every right to walk down an alley. And it's not something that's within our control, unless they are doing something that's illegal or somehow violates their safety or somebody else's safety that you could have interaction amongst police and them. So, it's a tricky way. I know I've had community meetings where I've had Mr. Smith come out, do presentations, Albert's come out, done presentations, talked about how the trains operated, the problems that we have, listened carefully to a lot of the complaints. But I, we have people who regularly attend the meetings, just like we do have council meetings, who are very vocal about any problems that they have seen. In fact, some of them are the same that come to our council meetings. And it isn't limited just to the train. And I want people to know that everything is not smelling like roses on all our buses either.
Right.
And we do not have any security on our buses. There are no age limits, as we just talked about, on who rides the buses, either from the youngest to the oldest. And again, the same thing applies there. I mean, they have the ability to call police to get somebody off. You're safer on the train than actually sometimes you are on the bus. And I've heard many of the bus drivers have called me, told me their experiences. So, it's not unique to Phoenix and I think a lot of it is education for our people who live here, because it is new to us and we don't have the experience from the ridership as well as the enforcement side. So, I think it's a learning process. I think it's a communication thing that we need to continue to improve and strive, whether it's the campaigns that we have in the schools. I know we work a lot with schools, educating the kids very closely on how to ride, what's proper behavior and whatever. We probably should expand that to some of our other schools that rely primarily on buses, because it applies both places.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And so, I don't want you to think it's all doom and gloom, because it's not. A lot of improvements are being made. I think it's a learning process and people are responding very well. So, thank you.
We have a card, but before I ask that person to come up, couple of concerns, right? I mean, when we raise the prices of the light rail, I mean, we do a massive campaign, we let everyone know what's going on with this type of a campaign. And I agree, we need to respect individuals that are riding. We should have done the same thing, we should have done a massive campaign, let people know, if you have a child on there, an eight-year-old, and that person's misbehaving and you kick that person off, some of the calls that we're getting is like, "Are we going to get contacted? Is my eight-year-old just going to get kicked off?" And like Laura said, we use Seventh Street and Camelback and just right on Seventh Avenue and Camelback, is he going to be standing there at Seventh Avenue and Camelback with no ways to communicate with their parents? Things like that, we were getting calls about. I didn't know, as elected official, I didn't even know that these codes were going into effect. So, those are the kind of calls that we're getting and I can only imagine others that are out there. So, I think exactly if we start to educate individuals that are out there, you can hear some of the concerns that we're hearing. And I think that there has to be some type of a campaign and education of our community. With that, Mr. Leonard Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, or Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, Council Lady Thelda Williams, Councilperson Michael Noakowski, and Vice Mayor Laura Pastor. My name is Leonard Clark. I understand that we all want safety for our citizens and our residents, but I am very concerned in that, I've heard it described that under this so-called, you know, respect the ride program, you know, an individual can be kicked off for ambiguous reasons that aren't necessarily under the eyes of city ordinance or under Arizona revised statutes against the law. I believe that anytime you kick somebody off a bus or a train, then you have to cite some type of law. Because when we start granting powers to officials that are running, like light rail, for example, the power to kick people off for what you call a set of rules, but they're not violating any legal laws that are using our public tax dollars, and we are using Phoenix's public tax dollars on light rail, I believe that that's unconstitutional. And I'm no libertarian. So, look, I want our people to be safe, but I think that this is a huge problem. I think that, you know, to myself, I'm concerned that there are powerful wealthy interests that would not like to see homeless people or people like me, I'm dressed in shorts, for example, because I think it's great. But hopefully I don't get sick. But I think that, well, I'm just concerned. I'm just concerned that, you know, the wealthy, the powerful interests, the sports people, all of these people don't want homeless being seen because it's, we don't want the tourists to see it. But, you know, our public safety people, whether they like it or not, what helps the public safety of Phoenix are the homeless people themselves, our brothers and sisters. They will report crimes that they see to you, you know this to be true, you don't care about who's reporting to you a crime going on, you just know that you're getting good evidence. So, I just, I'm concerned that this is just an effort, a veiled effort to go after our homeless brothers and sisters. I believe if you kick them off, you better have a law that they violated or a city ordinance to say, "Well, you know, their behavior..." I just want to give you constructive notice. I believe as a citizen that, you know, we're getting into unconstitutional behavior here and if somebody wants to see the City of Phoenixes are kicked off, you need to have a law cited, not just some ambiguous reason, because our officers even know this. You have to go by Arizona revised statutes. You can't just say, "Well, I'm going to kick somebody off because I think they were yelling." We're getting into territory now. You can say it's behavioral. You know what? How do we know it's not because your skin is brown or you don't look clean? Thank you very much for letting me speak, I appreciate it.
So, are we quoting some type of ordinance or is it just a behavior that...
As well as to the board finally adopting it. It is available on our internet, it was not posted until the board adopted it and approved it. So, the complete code of conduct and the basis and foundation for every passenger deserves a safe, a safe ride and a good experience on light rail and public transit is available for view to anyone online, under respect the ride for Valley Metro, so I welcome you to do that first. Absolutely, this is not, again, about discrimination at all. It is not. It could never, we are not, we don't live in that type of society, especially as Valley Metro would not, would not follow that part of campaign. And with the stakeholders that were involved in reviewing it as part of the team effort and the partnership, we would never want to go down that alley at all. The Allied Universal team were provided a full day of training on the code of conduct and specifically advised that this is not about discriminatory behavior and about selecting a certain socioeconomic class. This is about behavior itself alone, not the way a person's dressed or the color of their skin, absolutely. So, if you have any other, definitely any other concerns or questions, by all means, please review the code of conduct and any questions you have as a result of that, absolutely bring them to my attention and Scott Smith as well.
Vice Mayor, any comments?
No, it's a decline.
Well, my concern would be a couple of things is, I believe there needs to be a community outreach. You can't just do it online because you have individuals that happen to be homeless, that happen to be, they couldn't afford to purchase a computer so they don't have access to online. So, that's one of the biggest concerns I have is that a lot of those individuals that actually ride public transportation, it's because they can't afford to have more than one vehicle. So, that would be the outreach process. As an elected official, I didn't get any type of memo, notice or anything like that. And I represent a portion of the City of Phoenix. So, if I didn't get that information, I didn't understand the change that was happening. And I started getting calls, I could have been that advocate for you all saying, "Here's what's going on." So, I think somebody dropped the ball, I'm not sure where or how, and I'm not blaming yourself, because you're just enforcing the rules. But somebody at Valley Metro needs to come up with some type of campaign where you go to all the schools or the heavy-used areas and let people know this code's happening, especially parents. I mean, when my kid misbehaves and they're kicked off the light rail, now I understand why and they're going to get disciplined, right? So, I think that, I think that parents need to understand that also. And I think that's some of the concerns that we're voicing up. I don't know if it's... And then the other thing is, the City of Phoenix has really looked into, we have an 80% increase of homeless individuals in our city. So, we created a program called Phoenix Cares and it's not the best program out there, but it's something. We have a homeless shelter with services and all that's overstaffed. I mean, it's, the people from all over, the Maricopa County are sending their individuals to our campus. So, we're trying to do the best that we can with the resources that we have. So, we're asking, as a regional approach, that other cities also take on the homeless situation and create programs like we have here in the City of Phoenix. I know it's not, you guys, this problem, but what the problem is, is that Metro goes from Mesa, Tempe, where individuals happen to pick up a ride and come to the services that we provide for residents here in the City of Phoenix, and we don't turn anyone away. So, I think this Phoenix Cares is a first step in the right direction. I'm not sure if there's some way that Valley Metro can expand that concept throughout the light rail areas and really maybe help us with the counseling and help that some of those individuals might need. I know that you can't force other cities to do the same type of programs we have here in the City of Phoenix, but I think it's something that we need to share and everybody should pick up their fair share of helping out. So, with that, I'm not sure if there's any other comments.
I want my comment. Albert, what I would like to see is that you work with Metro and Adrian, and you could give us a monthly report on, I'm sure you track how many people get kicked off or get citations. And if you could give that information to him, you could also help come up with some type of plan, a public awareness plan. Albert's our person at Phoenix, so we're going to task you, I hope, to do this. I think it's very important. And then also get statistics from PD on anybody that they've had contact or what it was, so that we have a better communication flow. I probably get the most because I serve with a foot in each camp. I didn't think about, the rest of you weren't getting the information and I apologize for that. I guess I should have been more vocal about it. But if we could set up something, and I think that would help explain, and, you know, I don't know if you even could stripe a, put it on a bus or put it on the train and have a contest on how many school kids could tell you what the code of conduct, how many rules... I mean, you guys are creative. I'm sure you could come up with some solutions and then give us a monthly report.
Was the monthly updates on the statistics on the program, et cetera? So, happy to start doing that immediately.
Vice Mayor?
Councilwoman, I don't think it's your responsibility to keep all of the council up to date, especially when there's someone designated to do that. I would like to see a report, actually not monthly, I would actually like to see it bi-weekly, a report as to what is happening on the line throughout all our districts, because they all hit us. And I think that every councilperson probably should have access to it and be given part of our reports. And then we're aware of where some of our, I mean, I know where my hotspots are, but some of the, where the hotspots are on the line and then try to, as policymakers, look at, we're seeing the hotspots, what do we need to do and start having that dialogue? So, I would prefer to see that.
And, you know, we talked about the safety and security on the light rail, but I'd like to figure out where the light rail is in our City of Phoenix, that surrounding area, if there's an increase of crime or violence or fighting, robberies... if there's an increase of crime or violence or fighting, robberies and all that, to figure out what type of impact on the whole safety, not just on the light rail itself, but within those communities. Those are the concerns that we're hearing from the community is that we enforce it on the light rail, but then we're forcing the situations or the problems out into the, into the neighborhoods. So, maybe later on in the future, if we can have that as a future agenda item, the impact on the community and the impact on our police, that the extra calls and, and the staff that we have, and resources that we have to provide. And maybe that's something we need to look at in the future of extending the budget to not just on the light rail itself, but also those neighboring communities that are affected. With that, anything else? Thank you so much. All right, next is drones.
We've got lots of people.
We've got a, we've got a group here.
All right, drone use, right?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee. We are here to express our intent to move forward and begin the process to utilize drones in the City of Phoenix into our operations. And I don't have the clicker. Thank you. So, I will talk about our city use cases and some of the challenges that, that we've, we anticipate. My counterparts here will also talk about the public safety use cases, as well as Mr. Dan Brown will give us a legal overview for drone use. Really, drone use, this represents one of the biggest technological advances that we can use and utilize for the City of Phoenix. All of these departments represent, and I apologize to Transit, that I did not include them here, but all of these departments represent members of our workgroup that have indicated uses, use cases for the City of Phoenix. We came together, discussed the challenges, discussed the governance that would be required in order for us to have a comprehensive city plan, recognizing that there, there would be a lot of things that we would need to address in order to approach it from a city level, but that is our intention. We are, we have engaged law as well as risk management to understand the legal implications, to understand the insurance requirements, and, and all of those things that will allow us to be compliant in the legislation in using drones. Here are some of the use cases, just again, generally. For example, water services have indicated there's over 450 acres that, of wetlands that they have to monitor, they have to be monitored arially, and so this, this is a good use case for that. Mapping, training and exercise, monitoring traffic flows, both in outdoor events as well as traffic in cars. There's so, sure.
How do they do it now?
Good question. Water here? No, no, absolutely.
Councilwoman Williams, right now, we mostly do it manually, and we can get aerials flown on a regular basis, but that's really expensive. So, the drones are very inexpensive, easy.
Do you use boat now, or what?
We use the boat now, and we have to get off manually, get onto the islands, monitor the, the different types of, you know, cattails and different types of plants and vegetation within the wetlands, as well as the wildlife. With the drone, we can do it on a regular basis, you know, 25 feet above the ground, and it's just way more efficient and way more easier, it's, it's more effective. And we also have the overlay, the overbank wetlands, which is another 1,000 acres.
Thank you.
So, would that mean less staff when you're starting to use the drones?
It means less, no, actually, it doesn't mean less staff, it does mean less expensive if we have to fly aerials.
What were you using, equipment? But, they will be the ones, or I'm assuming they would be the experts on flying them.
Right, the applications...
Because my kids aren't.
They use drones? The intention would be that drones would complement the, the resources that are in place and, and really expand those in those ways. Obviously, they wouldn't have to get in a boat anymore and they can utilize that staff for, for other things, so you may as well stay just in case there are other questions. You know, again, we have mapping here, we recognize storms, some of the use cases that have been indicated, for example, parks and recreation, using aerial videography to say, and pinpoint a particular person that's perhaps lost. So, our first responders get there and then they can see and pinpoint and, and really address the situation more quickly. Other applications, using those same drones to use and monitoring, monitor those mountainous areas. They want to create a virtual tour of sorts for their mountainists and recreational facilities. So, there's lots of applications, I think, that we would think of, and then others that we will drill down into and learn as we move forward. One of the things I think about as the emergency manager, and that's, that's not really in our distant past, is what happened in 2014 with our floods. That's what our community looked like, and if we had drones at that time, you can imagine the use cases that would be relevant in this instance. And finally, there are always challenges. Public perception, there's always some social discomfort, at least there is now, related to drone use and understanding privacy and safety. So, as we develop this program, we will be working with those stakeholders and expecting feedback from them on how we're going to implement our, our program to make sure we are respectful of privacy laws and that we are aware that it could, there are nuisance issues that others have experienced during implementations. From a cybersecurity standpoint, how do we make sure that the, the equipment is safe? How do we make sure the data that it's carrying is safe? So, those are, again, our governance things that we will discuss as we move forward. In 2015, commercially, 80,000 drones were purchased. It is anticipated that 2.6 million will be purchased annually in 2025. So, from a traffic management standpoint in our skies, what is that going to be for us as a government and how will we integrate that with the other enthusiasts that will be utilizing drones? And then obviously liability and risk, we are connected with the law department and risk management to understand what those implications are and will work to make sure that we're in compliance. I will turn it over to Chief Grain to talk about fire use cases.
Thank you. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, and Vice Mayor Pastor, Councilwoman Williams. At the request of the emergency manager, we focus mainly on the operational support piece for this slide, and the, the case use or the use case is fairly clear with regard to supporting structural firefighting as well as wildland urban interface firefighting efforts from a strategic level and providing good oversight, situational awareness for the command team and the firefighters operating in that, in that environment. There's always been discussion about, in coordination with Parks Department, supporting the technical rescue teams primarily on mountain rescues, but also other, other incidents as well that they respond to, that it can provide situational awareness, quickly fix and locate the location of those in distress so that the, the Fire Department Operational Units and Support Units can then be deployed more efficiently in a more timely manner. There's also support, direct support that's been demonstrated by our outside agency partners with, related to quickly providing a payload into the victim, care and comfort and communication items that would arrive at the victim's side before the rescuers would be able to get there through over-the-ground methods. Hazards materials is probably one of the largest potential areas where we could create, reduce quite a bit of risk and exposure to the community and our members, as well as mitigate these incidents and stabilize them more quickly, and then therefore reduce the impact on the community as well. But, we've, we've, again, partnered with our outside automatic aid partners who are kind of leading, leading the charge on this and demonstrated proof of concepts in very task-level specific areas. And a lot of this hinges around additional technologies, wireless technologies and chemical detection and radiation, and the UAV simply becomes a platform to deploy that technology forward without exposing our own members. The mass casualty incident, again, there's a obvious strategic and tactical level advantage in using UAVs to position infrared and, and visible light cameras from a high point, getting a clear definition of what the scope and the, and the, and the complexity of the incident, and then deploying resources on a tactical level very efficiently. And then obviously other unplanned spontaneous events like demonstrations and things like that, keeping, keeping the response units that are coming into support out of harm's way and responding in an efficient way in coordination with our public safety partners. And then a significant area that we're, we're kind of very, we've been making tremendous inroads in, is the special and planned events with the major events coming to the City of Phoenix, and utilizing those technologies to provide greater security and oversight and provide, without putting our own people inside the potential hazard zone and, and having a clear understanding of what the hazards and threats are. Additional, additional, should you have follow-up questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
So, are we using drones at this moment on some of our mountain rescues?
The City of Phoenix does not.
Does not, okay. I can't remember then what I saw, but someone, it was one of the mountain rescues, and it must not have been here then, where they used a drone to locate where that person was, and it was in a, they were in a sticky situation where down on the ground, they were trying to figure out how they were going to get to the person. They couldn't use a helicopter, so it was, it was, it was an interesting situation, but they used a drone to find them, so.
The technical rescue teams from Scottsdale Fire and Mesa Fire Department are already using drones to accomplish a lot of that, and we do respond and help support operations in their communities.
Good morning. Chairman Gadd, Assistant Chief, Strategic and Tactical Services. Good to see everybody, Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, and Councilman. Yes, it's a mouthful. Trevor Brown, Brad, I just wanted to put that in. With me today, I brought Commander Grady Carlson, who's the commander over the Tactical Support Bureau, and he's going to talk about police operations as pertains to drones, and then Sergeant Blake Carlson from the Homeland Defense Bureau, and he'll talk about the laws regarding drones. And I know there's some questions about that, so they're both available here for you. So, Grady.
Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, good morning, and thank for the opportunity. I'll start off by echoing Chief Grain's comment in that the Phoenix Police Department currently is not deploying drones and we don't own that technology at this time. As we move forward, excuse me, our intent is to focus its use in two areas, the first of which being crime scene management and documentation. Technology can assist greatly in the aerial search of crime scenes while allowing us to maintain the integrity of the scene. Secondly, it can help us more accurately map and diagram scenes through the use of GPS coordinates. And lastly, it's a phenomenal platform for scene photography. The second area of focus, again, as my colleagues had mentioned, both planned and unplanned major events. It can assist with the pre-planning phases and during, also assist in ensuring we have adequate resources and they are deployed appropriately. If you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them, otherwise I'll turn it over to Sergeant Blake Carlson, no relation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Williams. Yeah, I'd like to give you a quick overview of our Phoenix Police Department's drone enforcement policy and plan. It was enacted in November of this last year, although the, we actually had a template in place in time for the Final Four activities that took place last March. So, we were capable of carrying out any enforcement action from that time, but it was formally adopted in November of this past year. Our policy, our enforcement policy is based on Arizona state law, which was enacted in, signed by the governor in May of 2016. So, it's a relatively new law, and I'll just state that law enforcement across Arizona is grappling with how they're going to do, conduct drone enforcement. So, we are leading the pack as far as coming up with a policy at this time. The goal is to protect our public and our critical infrastructure in the city, and one of the emphasis that the police department is going to use in our enforcement efforts is to educate the hobbyist. We don't anticipate a lot of problems with the commercial drone users. They tend to be, have their licenses from the FAA, they take that very serious. We see the major violators as potentially being the hobbyist who doesn't, who don't know all the rules, who haven't taken, haven't studied up on, on FAA regulations regarding drone use. So, we're going to educate as much as possible, and in aggravated circumstances, we're going to conduct enforcement. And so, in that, I already mentioned the commercial drone use community, we are partnering with them as much as possible, making inroads with them so that we can get ahead of their drone flights by announcing on our police radios that there will be a drone flown in a certain area that would normally be a restricted area in the city so that our officers aren't tied up with trying to find the operator and taking time out of their normal duties, their very busy lives to look after this drone. So, that's a goal of working with the commercial drone community.
With that, are there any questions?
I have a question. When you talk about the hobbyist, what, what do you mean by that? Because I can't remember, last year, I know the legislature, this was part of our drones conversation, and there was a certain feat that we could fly, and then after that, we were going to, wasn't it 500, I want to say? I don't know. I don't know where you hit the FAA, but then there was a certain spot below the FAA where we could fly. Am I getting, am I...
Mr. Chairman and Vice Mayor Pastor, the Arizona state law is based on FAA regulations, rules, and laws, and any federal regulations, rules, and laws. So, if it, if the drone flight is a violation of any, for example, FAA regulation, then it becomes a criminal violation of state law. So, there are a number of FAA regulations that govern drone flights in our city, and large areas of our city are no-fly areas. Other areas are limited, and still some of our more outlying areas would be relatively unrestricted in, in some drone flights. So, it just depends what part of the city.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, how would anybody, oh, for example, me. I purchased two drones for Christmas. My kids have two drones now. So, that's for activity. How would they know that they're in violation or... I, I guess I'm trying to figure it out so that as parents or as me, that now I'm thinking about it, I'm going in Cannon Park and I'm going to go try to figure it out, how to work it. How would I know that I'm in violation of anything?
Yes.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Vice Mayor, Pastor. So, federal law actually sets out that definition, and the FAA in the Reauthorization Act of both 2012 and 2016 includes a definition of hobbyist. And interestingly enough, there is a provision, it's actually 336 in that law, that allows local jurisdictions such as the City of Phoenix to, to provide for regulation, and, and I'm going to discuss that here in a second, what we've done. But, to answer your question, the FAA is, has said that if, has defined a hobbyist, and that essentially it is for part-time use, you're not being paid by others, and so you're entitled to use it. The, as court in Washington DC actually threw out, though, the federal rules related to recreational use, and now the, the new administration has proposed new rules. So, they're going back and forth trying to decide to what extent it's regulated, and so we're, we're in a legal gray area, but, but you're exactly right. At this point, as a, as a parent or just a recreational hobbyist, there are specific rules, you shouldn't be... there are specific rules, you shouldn't be flying close to an airport, and then within the city of Phoenix, we have certain rules which I can follow up. And maybe that's a good segue into my part of the presentation, if you don't mind. So, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, one of the things that we've seen is there are some organized groups of highly skilled users, and they like to all go to the same space and demonstrate their skill level with flying certain configurations and speed and all of that. So if you think about it in terms of like kids that form groups and they go with their skateboards to skate parks, there are now clubs, if you will, of drone users that are hobbyists, and they go for competitions. And so that's part of what we're going to have to be dealing with as we go forward.
And that's exactly a great point. So actually, there is a, an association, it's the Model Aircraft Association, and they have set out rules of, not conduct, but rules to, to fly recreationally. And actually, the FAA legislation references, so where the hobbyists and recreationists have issued those rules, they've acknowledged them. Our own city code, actually, in the parks, so it's actually found in city code section 2449. We've adopted those same rules of safety, and it speaks to the, the events that Assistant City Manager DeHoney has raised. So we've anticipated that, Parks has adopted those rules of, of safety. And while we're on the, the city code side of it, so we have regulated the recreational use as permitted by state law, and I'll get into the four exceptions under state law, but we have regulated the use of recreational drones in our parks to eight designated areas. And we have, we've actually had a few incidents where they've been flying drones outside those designated areas, but to my knowledge, we haven't actually enforced them. We've, we've actually, it's been more of kind of a notice and warning approach, just saying there are certain areas, and so we've really worked hard to notify and inform the public. Because again, as a parent or as someone just flying this, you may not necessarily know. But we have, yeah. So we, but we've actually adopted, we've adopted those rules in, in our code.
And the rules that we adopted were, it was about, I'm trying to remember the conversation because, I think it was about a year, year and a half ago, and I remember it very vividly because I think it was going through the parks, went through the parks because there was a big dialogue about it. And then we started moving stuff through, and then it stopped because the state was getting involved, and we chose to back off and wait till the state gave us some guidance. And then something happened in between there.
No, so, Mr. Chair, Vice Mayor Pastore, so your, your memory is exactly correct. We initially started a process where we were going to regulate drones, and in the middle of that process, the state legislature enacted state law. It's actually 133729, so it's actually found in the criminal code. And there's really, there's really four, four good takeaways. I'm going to really condense this down, but there's really four good takeaways in that, that statute. Number one, it basically says, we, the state, we preempt the city except in four areas. Number one, where it's already authorized by the FAA. Number two, the city can decide how it wishes to operate and use drones itself that it owns. So what we're doing here is absolutely authorized and contemplated by the state law. Number three is that cities can regulate the takeoff and landing, and we were very particular about that, in the use of drones for parks under certain conditions. Of course, we comply, and that was a specific exclusion that we made sure that we got into the state law because we were going through the process. And finally, it does not apply to the operation of, of drones by first responders. And under state law, first, a first responder is defined as law enforcement officer, fire, or ambulance driver. So those are the four big takeaways. And then consistent with that, we did adopt regulations in our parks, and what we have said in our parks is that, yes, you, hobbyists can fly in certain designated areas. Otherwise, it does not apply to first responders and emergency operations. It does not apply for the use of maintenance and those types of uses by the Parks Department or the city. And it also does not apply to permitted commercial use. Actually, our film office, we have a number of commercials, for example, that are shot using drones out at South Mountain Park, some of those places. So there are those exceptions, and, but, but for those exceptions, we are essentially preempted by both federal and state law.
Mr. Chairman, when we were doing the work on this a year and a half ago, one of the stakeholders that was at the table with us throughout was Amazon, and they expressed their desire and their planning, they had hoped to, within a 12-month period back then, be actually delivering packages to your front door with a drone. That's not quite perfected yet, but that is coming. And so we, a little nervous about how all this is going to play out, but it is allowed, and so it's something the public will eventually have to get used to, seeing your package sort of come down from the sky.
We no longer look for a stork, we look for a.
That's where babies come from now.
I have a couple of questions. Did the parks go through the council, those regulations on the drone?
Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Williams, yes, they did go through council to approve those, yes, absolutely. And it was actually in September of 20, get my years right, 2015.
Oh, no wonder I don't remember.
Wait, 2016, 2016, we're in 2018. 2016.
I guess now what you're talking about, after listening to this presentation, is developing internal policies on each department's use of drones? Is that correct? Okay. Because I, I mean, you gave some very legitimate, reasonable explanations on how they could be used, save manpower and provide better safety. So will those be brought to council through the subcommittee and as we talk about the internal policies so that we can explain what pertains to the city versus amateurs, but doesn't impact like, I, I know realtors use them, and there's some other professional uses, and you can explain the differences to us?
Mr. Chairman and Councilwoman Williams, in the audience, we have Commander Brian Lee, and Brian Lee is working on the internal policy for, for the functions of that, that drone use. So there's a whole certification process.
For the whole city or for just you?
Well, we could, I'm sure we will be the forefront, and we'll, we're going to have to do some modifications with public safety versus non-public safety, so that is something we can discuss more in the future.
It needs to be one.
Right, right.
Mr. Chairman, part of what you're seeing represents our efforts to coordinate inside the city, because we do have some departments that are a little further along than others. So we are coordinating all together. So the slide that Lisa had up, it showed all the different possible uses, we're trying to get our arms around who all needs to use one, what would you like to use it for, so that our risk management rules and our policies inside is all one, not everybody doing their own thing.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
And police, and, well, maybe even in parks or fire, whatever, if you're using those for crime scenes or where potential arson, you suspect, or something against law, or how do you store them? I mean, are you going to have to have that capacity to, to keep a film, to store it? And can you bring us, if that's a possibility, what the cost of that's going to be and how you incorporate that?
Yes, excuse me. We talked about unmanned aerial systems, and I didn't explain that at the beginning, but really that includes all of the, the entire system. So the staffing, the training, the governance, the policies, procedures, in addition to the equipment. And as we talk about the different use cases, we will have a different set of drones, so we won't have necessarily the same, 20 of the same drones. If it's used for photography, it could be a smaller drone. If it's used for surveillance, now it's a different drone. But we do want to, excuse me, we do want to understand the governance that, that needs to be relevant, it has to be relevant, in order to have a city policy on the drone use. So as Mr. DeHoney expressed, our intention is to have a city policy, understanding that each individual department will have their own business cases for use, and standard operating procedures relative to that, but the governance will be a city policy.
Vice Mayor.
So it's exactly what Councilwoman Williams is asking for, a very coordinated effort. It sounds like it's coming out of risk management, where you're the lead, and every, all the departments are coming together as to why, or what the purpose of using the drone is, and then the policy will be written for, in a collaborative effort, and maybe possibly police section, da-da-da, fire section, da-da-da.
Yes, ma'am.
Parks, water, or.
Vice Mayor, Mr. Chair, absolutely.
Okay, so I think that's what we're asking for. We're asking for it to be all coordinated and it not come back in different pieces.
And as a father of six that probably bought some drones for the kids for Christmas, in a lay, layperson's terms, what can an individual, a child use the drone for? Or is it appropriate just for individuals that are watching, we're not scaring them that? They're going to get out there and get arrested for using their drones that they bought their children for Christmas.
I can answer that unless somebody else wants to. So there is a definition I had in my notes. Civil Aviation Authority, CCA, between, has made a distinction between recreational drones and commercial drones. A recreational drone refers to individuals using drones for entertainment or as a hobby. A commercial drone refers to drones that can either generate a public service or good or an economic benefit or other valuable consideration for the operator, I think, just as Mr. Brown said earlier. But there are stipulations for drone use. I have a drone, and you are supposed to register your drone, even using it as an enthusiast. There is a line-of-sight restriction. There are ceilings to how fly, how, how you should fly that drone. For example, I think the police can talk about drones that they found because they kind of, when the drone gets out of range, you can't control it any longer. So I know Commander Carlson can talk about that.
Actually, that's you. Hi. Mr. Chairman and Vice Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman Williams, a great place to start for just general regulations, since the state law is based on federal regulations, rules and laws, is go to the FAA website and look at drone, just Google it, and it has a number of really quick references that you can, you can look at to, gives just a good ground base of where you can operate drones, where you can't, what are some of the rules involved. And as long as you're within those parameters, you're not going to be violating state law. And it's going to be a good basis for, good ground for parents, too, to have an understanding of where and when and how drones can be flown.
So I just purchased those drones because it was a Christmas gift, and it was coming from Santa.
You're going to jail now.
Yeah, and now I'm having, I'm hearing, and I'm just being a, a parent at that moment of, of purchasing a gift for the kids. Cool, it's new, and I'm hearing I have to register it and all these, I don't think the general public understands that, because I didn't understand it, and if I would have known, I wouldn't have purchased. But that's kind of what I'm hearing.
And Vice Mayor, Mr. Chair, you don't have to, it's not a lengthy process, it's not, you don't have to have a pilot's license, anything like that, and we can give you a one-page fact sheet so that you have that information.
Well, that'll be great because it'll help me, but I'm just saying, in general.
Could you put that on next floor?
Yeah, exactly.
We can have the drones drop it off each child's home.
Yeah.
Deliver.
This is just very interesting.
It's true, and it will be an issue for the police department, which is why they're addressing it now, as I mentioned in the slideshow, 2.6 million annually, there will be a lot of enthusiasts flying drones.
And if I can, Mr. Sheriff, I can direct, answer a question. The police department, we're not looking to make arrests on this. It's, it's more of an educational deal with us and for the community. In aggravated circumstances, we will do something, but, you know, generally speaking, we want to educate everybody, even, even in contact in the park. Our, our goal is just to educate.
And if we could actually get that one-page fact sheet, so maybe we can have them at our senior centers, our community centers, our libraries and all that. And we, yeah, water bill maybe, so we, as the city of Phoenix, are doing our part to educate the community. But I think we need to figure out how to get that word out there, because when you purchase a drone, there's not a warning or any type of clear information. Maybe it's in the fine print, but I'm not sure that many parents know exactly what to do's and don'ts, especially to register it.
It's in a pretty box. And you think, and I, and I didn't think I would, bought a very expensive drone, but I figured out I did, because it flies really high, and I was like, get it down, get it down.
We have one card, Leonard Clark.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to have to slip up, I'll be on the phone. Can you take it over? Hello, thank you very much, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark. I have some friends who are watching now, also on live video, but I'm deeply concerned because, well, first of all, actually, I do like the idea about the regulating of drones because when I've been at a park with family, you know, one person with a drone can take up half the park, and I just don't think that's right. So I'm glad you're looking at that. But my, above all, my more serious concerns are today, this whole question of how this might affect city of Phoenix residents, citizens, Fourth Amendment right to privacy. You know, it doesn't seem like the right to privacy is respected anymore from our US Constitution, and it's, you know, on downward, you know, the, the Constitution is, is supreme. And I just, you know, I'm just very concerned about it. I know that this, this day was coming, and I'm no ally of Jeff Bezos of Amazon because he also has contracts with the federal government, so I, I really suspect him, the Washington Post, so. But anyways, the other third concern I have is, recently in Texas, there was a, an outcry because it was found that their police department was working with Homeland Security. Now, look, I understand, we need to work with the other agencies. My only concern is that the wall we have between the federal and the state and the municipal is, has disappeared completely, you know, with post 9/11. So I'm, my concern is, like when Trump was here in town, you know, I, I've been reading reports that police departments sign secrecy agreements with Homeland Security, I believe it was New York City or either Chicago, secrecy agreements. The police cannot tell their own city councils or their citizens if they are using on loan drones or stingrays, these types of devices. And I'm just saying, please, if you're in charge, and I understand now that if the police have signed agreements with Homeland Security, secrecy agreements, still, it leaves we, the citizens, out of the loop, and it leaves you as representatives out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard Clark. Are there any more questions regarding this subject? Well, thank you.
Actually, I asked for this, and I'm quite surprised with the response. I had no idea all this was going on.
Well, I'm glad you asked for this, because as a mother of two drones, I now need to figure this out.
You're in serious trouble, lady.
I know, I don't want to be a violation. Thank you.
Do we have any items for future journalists? I think we're going to continue mountain rescues till the next one.
You got it. You got it. I have nothing.
I don't at this time either.
We have Leonard Clark.
Or public, public comment.
Thank you.
I think so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Williams. I know that Councilperson Noakowski had to leave. I'm a resident of Phoenix. I'm concerned on the body cams. Now, I know that we're saying there's a dispute with contractors, the vendors, for police body cams. But what I'm concerned about is, and first of all, this angers my friends on the left, it angers my friends on the right, we need a police, we need constabulary, but that's going to anger some of my friends watching. But, you know, I'm concerned because, you know, I'm worried the Phoenix Police Union, Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, who do not like me, by the way, are dragging their feet, and somehow, they are causing these delays in getting these body cams. I understand that, you know, a body cam should not Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, who do not like me, by the way, are dragging their feet, and somehow, they are causing these delays in getting these body cams. I understand that, you know, body cams should not be on when you go to the bathroom, these kinds of things, but all too frequently, even when we do have them, they're getting, they're getting turned off for mysterious reasons. So, you know, I would ask, please, stop with the delays, get the body cams, we need them, they're not going to solve everything, you know, but, but I want to build trust back between the police and the community, and I'm going to take heat from that from everybody, because when you're in the middle, you please nobody. But I don't have to worry about votes, I don't have to worry about getting paid to represent anybody. I'm just here as a resident of Phoenix that loves my city. So, please do that, and also, it is time for Phoenix, the City of Phoenix, the fifth largest city in the United States of America, to be, to join the other major cities, metropolitan cities, and have a civilian, you know, slash employee oversight board. I'm willing to work, I believe some of our fellow activists are, with you and other members of the police staff, but just going to one member, one activist, and trying to divide and conquer is not going to work, because there is a trust issue right now. And I know police officers put their lives on the line. But then again, I'm not going to call the police now if I have a family problem. You know why? Because I'm worried they're going to get shot, for the flimsiest of excuses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, relative to future agenda items, so we are continuing the one item. Next month, we're slated to have a presentation or update on the fire department hiring. BNR will be involved in that. You all had asked for Phoenix Cares with Citywide Homeless and Kemp, a response strategy to come, so that would occur in February.
Are they going to supply data on what's transpired so far, and how many they've contacted, how many accepted services, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, ma'am. There'll be an overview of the RWC radio system, and then we need to start to give you some information regarding our air fleet, because at some point, we're going to have to replace these helicopters, and we need to put that on your radar screen, kind of what that looks like. So, that's what, and then, I don't know if we can get it done by February, but you had asked for us to try to find an official associated with Nextdoor. So, we'll, I can't promise that'll be February, but we will work on getting someone here.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.